Right, right.
That's good.
Okay.
Hey.
Quick, how are you?
To Park City.
Mobile.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna water my plants.
We're big.
You're planning, and Intermountain is co-sponsoring the T P E, the Career Education Building. It's basically planning some courses. Can be so cool. Go to some of the like training facilities that we have.
He's very, don't make my DT guys very happy.
We just need to get that same level of funding for Greener and Hunter. It's like, yes, we do.
Yeah, it's pretty similar, isn't it?
It is, but I mean, yeah, it's pretty similar curriculum wise, but just the tools and the tech. That they're able to. Information, yeah. That's where we just definitely. The G P I's. That's why I go to high school. Their medical system and all that stuff.
My son got into aviation, aviation class. The G P I, like. I went there very much a couple of times. Played, played on the simulator. Scratch. Always.
Hey guys.
I know.
Hi, guys.
Pretty good.
Bears out of the way.
You started late. Yeah, let's just keep, let's just keep it legit.
No.
And they really didn't.
Yeah.
Hey, sorry about the late start. We'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting for West Valley City Council. This June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. We're beginning our meeting at four thirty P M in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. This evening, we'd like to excuse Councilman Christensen. All other members of the council are present. Councilman Northfelt, Councilman Hune, Councilman Fitziamanu, Councilman Whitstone, Council Harmon, myself. We're also joined at the table with Mister Peely, our city manager, and Miss Kamic, our city recorder. For our meeting minutes, we have our minutes from our February twenty third, twenty twenty four study meeting, and our June eighteenth, twenty twenty four meeting. Turn those to the council for discussion or a motion.
To approve the strategic plan meeting and the June eighteen meeting minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. And those stand approved. We have our regular meeting this evening. Are there any changes on that? And are there any questions from the council concerning that meeting? No? Okay, should go nice then. All right, we'll start with um our ordinances, twenty four dash twenty seven. We'll turn the time over to Mister Welch for some municipal code concern collecting us.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Welch, Finance Director. Seems like volumes turned up a little bit. There we go. Um, this is a, that's what's before you is a change of verbiage in our code with regards to collections. And as you know, we're always looking for better ways to make sure that we're able to collect the money that's due to the city. In particular, we've had some challenges with the parking enforcement, where we have previously had a collection process that we were able to go through a company that was called Utrex that was able to attach tax refunds that company dissolved. It was actually run by the Utah, I'm sorry, the, yeah, Utah League of Counties. Uh, we haven't had really good tools for about a year now. Uh, the company that does the processing of the parking tickets is called Passport, and they have an initial collection uh effort that they put forward in collecting these tickets, which is basically they send out three letters and then that's it. Um, we haven't had really a good process for this. Uh, we were consulting in some of our conferences, both in the treasures, then the when the government finance officers conferences there, we ran across a firm that's called the Charrington Firm that that does collections for, uh, looks like about um nineteen other municipal entities within the state. They've been quite successful. And in order to do that, they have recommended that we do one addition to the change of the verbiage in our collection. It adds the words, uh, as we collect, it adds and reasonable attorney fees since they are an attorney firm. And we would like to kind of dip our toes into this collection firm and allow them the opportunity to see if they can collect some of the more delinquent obligations to the city. Uh, this would not be limited just to parking tickets. If we find it successful, we could also branch it out into other things that are owed to the city if it made sense for us. So there's no contract that says we have to use them for these collections. Uh, but the way the verbiage has been changed in consult consultation with legal, uh, this would allow us the flexibility to use that across virtually everything that's owed in this owed in the city and not just specific to this firm, but allows us to use legal processes for a collection of these obligations. So that's what you have before you.
Okay, thank you. To the council, any questions?
Is there, is there a convention definition for reasonable?
Um, it's interesting you ask that. Now, we asked the same thing, why this? If we just had fees in there, did it make a difference? And reasonable, you know, there's a, there's a definition of, I don't know how you actually define it, but there is a um, I probably asked legal on the definition for reasonable, but we use this term in the sale of assets. We use it in the term of putting together contracts. And basically, the way I understand it is if it would stand up before scrutiny of a group of peers that would say these are reasonable or these are not reasonable. Um, the reason the word is put reasonable attorney fees in here is that when this, if this happens to go, any of our collections happen to go before a judge, and it does not say reasonable attorney fees, they will often disallow those. And so we knew those exact words. And that's from the experience of the legal firms that we've been working with for collections.
Is it also the intention to, I know it says that you could use this to collect on these fees. Is it the intention to just do that as a standard practice? So it's not like, why did you go after Lawrence for attorney fees, but not for me or anything like that?
Um, it gives us the option. Uh, all collections are a little bit different. You know, if we've got somebody that's got a parking ticket, their collections are a little bit different than maybe somebody that's delinquent on a construction bond. Uh, but it does give the flexibility for our legal department to use those terms. And they could either use this form, they could do it themselves. That gives them a little bit more strength when they get before a judge.
It's not something we can do now because it's not listed in.
That is correct. The likelihood of our uh, collection process standing up before a judge uh, is significantly weakened because we don't have that provision.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
On the parking issue itself, do you know about how much is not, what percentage is not getting collected?
Um, I don't have the percentage, but I do have the dollar amount and I have numbers. So um, my understanding is the statute of limitation on those is about three years uh, approximately. So if we haven't begun a collection process within three years, it drops off. If we have, then we can continue to pursue that obligation. Um, right now, we have almost ten thousand bills, tickets that are outstanding. Slightly over a million dollars in obligations that have not been paid. And um, they, this, this particular firm with the other organizations is claiming approximately thirty four percent success rate, which is extremely high for collecting these type of obligations. Uh, nationally, it ranges between four and nineteen percent. So we're, we're optimistic. Like I said, we're not obligated to use them, but we would like to be able to have an option and uh, give it a shot. And if it's successful and if it's satisfactory, we'll use it. If not, we'll look for something else.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Just, so is the debt sold to the agency and then they recover as far as, do they collect on behalf of the city?
Good question. In this instance, it's not an assignment of the debt, as they would collect on a, on a debt that remains ours and then pay us. Uh, and then anything they collect with this verbiage allows them to collect on top of what amount of the ticket is.
They determine that or this, I guess they.
They would determine the reasonable fees and it could be, I think, in the contract that they proposed with this thirty five percent, which is, which is industry standard. Uh, however, if something becomes, if it's a larger debt and it turns to litigation, then reasonable attorney fees would be determined by the judge.
On a parking ticket now, it's a hundred and twenty eight dollars. If you pay it within seven days, it's really just twenty eight dollars, correct?
Yeah, the, correct. The way they have it set up.
Well, so let me just finish real quick.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So that encourages you to pay it quickly. So if you decide not to do that, and it goes to these attorney fees, does our ticket itself, will we re-verbage that, that will say if you pay it in seven days, you pay this. Otherwise, it'll go for, and if you don't pay it within thirty, we're going to send it to collection. And it will be noted on there that attorney fees will be assessed.
I don't know that that's.
They understand that and they're more encouraged to pay in the seven days?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that's verbiages on the tickets, and I don't know if there's an option to put that on there. But you are definitely correct in the escalation of the fees. The actual ticket is a hundred and twenty eight dollars and they have a discount if they pay it within the shorter time period.
Because I just don't want our residents that have been kind of skirting this to all of a sudden get hit and beside hit with it. So I would rather, if we can, with the notice, make sure they know that if it goes to collection, there will be attorney fees.
We can certainly.
We're playing nice.
We can certainly look into that, and I think that includes, they'll send out an initial letter. We asked them about that, and that in, that indicates that if they pay it now, this is what the cost is that could escalate if they ignore it.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I'd just like them to know when they get the ticket.
Yeah, good point. Um, we will, we'll ask about that.
Okay. What we legally can do? Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, now turn the time to Mister Johnson for a resolution twenty four dash one ten. Purchase some more equipment.
Good afternoon. Dan Johnson, Public Works Director. This is a resolution to authorize the city to purchase a couple of pieces of equip, of equipment for use uh, by the Operation My Hometown group. So uh, it was in, included in this upcoming budget year in July, would, is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that the city council authorized for the purchase of equipment to be used uh, by the volunteers of the Operation My Hometown group. And um, but in addition to that, there's, they've, they've had a donor that's come forward with a sixty thousand dollar donation of that is intended to be made for the purchase, to, for the purpose of purchasing equipment um, for use by the Operation My Hometown group. This is a physician or a group of physicians that has a charity that has selected, they, they, they want to help the, the folks doing the service projects to have the right equipment. And so that'll certainly pay for a portion of what we're proposing to purchase here. Um, the, these, even with this equipment being donated, it will be owned and maintained by the city. Um, we will, it will be ours and we can one day decide that they can't use it. We don't intend to do that because we, we find great value in the the program, but it is city equipment and we, um, we have been letting them use a bucket truck and um, and some trailers, and we've provided training to those that, that use it, and we'll continue that same philosophy with with this tractor and this aerial lift that uh, is proposed to be purchased. So the, the value of the, the total value of these purchases is just under a hundred thousand dollars and um and, yeah, we, you know, we'll, we'll make it with, um, I guess we'll purchase them as soon as the new fiscal year comes. So if this gets approved next week, we'll make the purchase now and they'll have these available immediately for use on their days of service. Questions from the council?
The budget opening is only, we already have one string, uh, use a portion of that that's already been approved.
Correct. This budget opening is for the donated funds. Yes.
Thanks.
And we don't have those yet. Um, that they're in the process of, we're working out the details of getting them in our hands. So in the, there is a possibility that they don't come. We don't anticipate that, but in that case, um, if they didn't come, we would just use the budgeted funds to purchase the equipment. But we anticipate that they're coming.
Thank you for the picture of the lift. Couldn't find the Kubota, but.
Oh, I think there's a, well, there's probably not a picture. I think.
So it's not.
A smaller tractor that we wouldn't actually normally use. We could use it and it'll be in our yard and we'll, it'll, it's ours and we can use it if we, if we want, but it's a, it's a little bit smaller that it's easier to get in and out of back, get in and out of backyards. It comes with different uh, attachments that, that they frequently use, such as post hole diggers and, and excavator and and things like that, that it's going to be very beneficial for them. Um, they, they got one that's big enough, tall enough that it'll, it'll dump a load into a dumpster.
Okay.
So the types of things that they do quite frequently.
Well, that's a bigger tractor. Okay.
For um, maintenance, repair, eventual replacement, is it anticipated that this will come out of funding allocated to my hometown, or is this just municipal fleet or whatever you would call that?
Well, that's a good question, and I don't know that I have an answer right now. I mean, for, for operations and maintenance, we'll just take care of that with our own funds. When it comes time to replacement, uh, for replacement, um, I, this, this is a thing that's used, it's going to be used um, once a week, half a year. So I anticipate that it's going to have a really long life, and I just don't know that, you know, it might get, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question, but um, uh, if it's determined at that time that we need to replace it, then we'll probably have a conversation with that council, but I feel like it's going to be a while.
Yeah, we've had a Kubota in the family for over forty years, and they're just used lightly like that.
Yeah.
They last forever.
It's going to be a great resource for this, for these days of service.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, now we'll move to resolution twenty four dash one eleven, and we'll turn the time over to Miss Young. An agreement with Rocky Mountain Power.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jamie Young, Parks and Recreation Director. So the proposal today uh, is to enter into an agreement with Rocky Mountain Power to provide the power services for the wetland park. Uh, because it's a large park design, even though we're only completing phase one, the, this is the power for the entire park. So it's a lot larger cost than many of the smaller parks and certainly more than what we need for phase one. Uh, but the, the, as you know, there's not another um, option. You kind of go with what Rocky Mountain Power um, offers you, and so um, the, the contract is forty six thousand, eight eighty two and forty three cents.
Okay, to the council. Last time we spoke about this, they're pulling the wire and everything, right?
Correct.
We're not have to do any of it.
Right. Yep. So that'll get it ready for us, and then the construction will get it to where it needs to be on the property.
Great. Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, for our consent agenda, we have the three items. Uh, one is for a public utility easement at Westview Park, and the other two are reappointments to the P S R B. Did anybody have any questions on either, any of those? None? Okay. We'll go to our communication items. And we'll start with Mister Bunderson to introduce this item on victim service update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to take a moment uh, to introduce Isabel here. She's one of our um, victim advocates, and she's here as part of a grant reporting requirement, but also just because we want to um, bring out and show the council these victim advocates as much as we can. They do a really really difficult job, and they, you know, they, they speak for the, for the people who don't really have a voice, both um in, you know, in court and um, at the scene of crimes and and in all kinds of situations. They're on call. We've got one on call twenty four seven. And uh, they just really do an amazing job, and I, I like to tout that as much as I can. So here's Isabel.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, and thank you, Eric. Uh, yeah, so basically I just wanted to talk to you guys about what we do here and introduce our faces as well. Uh, my name's Isabel, as you mentioned. I've been in victim services for two years now, and I'm also a resident of West Valley, so it's so awesome to have an opportunity to live where I can serve our community as well, as well. Um, we have Jessica who's our coordinator, um, and we have four advocates actually that speak Spanish, which is really great and helpful because we do have a very big community of uh, Spanish speakers in West Valley. Um, as we also use our language services as well to help with individuals who don't speak Spanish or English. Uh, next slide. Uh, so some of the goals that our program aims, aims to achieve is, more than anything is really to attend um, court with victims. This is such a huge process in what we do daily because court is very confusing. And uh, we really want to protect victims with their rights and inform them of their rights as well and uphold those. Um, on top of that, we also provide financial assistance. Uh, go a little bit more into that on a, a slide here that, that comes up. Um, we do crisis line work as, or we have a crisis line, I apologize, but uh, we do a six week rotation where, yes, we are on call twenty four seven. And on call, essentially, we can go on scene when a victim requests us to give resources. We can also transport victims uh, with permission to the hospital um, or any shelter if they need to. We also can go to the hospital with victims to aid in a code R or an I P V exam. Um, we also do help them with their victim impact statement, which is a right of theirs, and so we have our information included to have access to them if they need to reach out to us so that we can help them fill that out. Again, we do notify the victims of these court hearings as they're coming up again because it is their right and we educate ourselves on the judicial process as well so that we can inform them where it's at and what the next steps are if they want to participate. Um, I'm informing them of when there is a trial where there's subpoena to attend. It's super important because the case could potentially get dismissed, as we know, so it's very important to keep them informed. And we attend our T V's or term and born victim interviews with our detectives or special victim unit. Really big on that because I think that we're really a good component to have with these interviews as we help the victims kind of have someone there that's not law enforcement, among them, connect to resources after that as well. Uh, next slide, please. In two thousand twenty three, we did serve two thousand two hundred and three victims. As you know, we have a team of six, uh, with Jessica is our, our supervisor, so she has a lot of other management duties, so it can get pretty tough to serve our community as, uh, West Valley is just so busy all the time, right? But uh, yeah, so we were able to uh, achieve that, and hopefully we can do more this year. So uh, luckily we are meeting and we're exceeding these goals I presented earlier as well. Uh, we, it is important to understand that we do serve every victim of crime. Um, they just give us a call. The officers are really great at connecting them to our information, are with our information so that they can give us a call. Uh, but domestic violence is our primary focus, as those are the cases that we get a lot of, that have those direct victims that we help with. Mostly, uh, next slide, please. The way that we utilize our funds, um, a lot of, uh, we do a good amount of trainings constantly, as there's always stuff to learn in these different fields or realms of uh, crime. And so we do online and in-person trainings. Um, hopefully we can do a little bit more in-person trainings as I think that, you know, with them being a bit more interactive, it's easier to retain that information. Um, it's super cool. We can do online as well. Uh, they go towards our staff. We um, also do have funds, um, every fiscal year. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't know those numbers, but Jessica has, um, are the amount that we get approved to help victims with things like their rent, lease termination, hotels, food, security systems, buzz passes, things like that. So really helping the victim with things that happen after the crime and you know, helping them with those reparations afterwards. Uh, these are a case by case basis, although we do generally help with whatever we can. Uh, obviously, we don't have enough funds for everybody with rent and lease termination, things like that, so we also connect them to resources that have those funds as well. So that's a pretty uh, broad general overview. Do you guys have any questions or concerns, anything about our program? Like to know.
Any questions from the council?
Question or any of the, and I thought I remember seeing this at one point, um, grant grants provided to our uh, victim advocates budget. We see outside grants from any other agencies to help.
To my knowledge, we're working on a state grant and a voca grant, um, but I apologize, I'm not, I'm actually the one who deals with most of our grants. But I do know that as far as staff goes, or it goes towards a state grant and a voca grant. So, sorry.
Well, with the news articles we've had the last week, this is such an important assist for people with domestic violence in their life, and the losses we've had in the last week have been horrific in other parts of the state. So I just really appreciate all of your hard work.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Uh, it's a blessing, and it's actually surprising to know how many um, advocate teams don't really do what we do as far as prosecution side of it all, as well as the law enforcement side, which I think are su, really important pieces together, right, uh, to have a case flow properly. But yeah, I think West Valley is great in doing that, and we are such a great team, so we appreciate you guys taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll turn the time over to Mister Welch for our fraud risk assessment.
Thank you again, uh, Jim Welch, Finance Director for the city. Um, I what we had up there. The, we're, we have every year, the uh, state auditor has requested that we complete what's called the fraud risk assessment. And this re, is a, um, an initiative that came about a few years ago when the state auditor's office was receiving um, a number of inquiries about the potential for fraud within the municipal uh, entities of the state. Some of them that they did investigations on ended up in the press and were quite visible. Other ones were relatively quiet and were settled internally. Um, they thought, well, what can we do to reduce uh, the fraud that may be occurring or else reduce the opportunity? Um they thought, well, what can we do to reduce uh the fraud that may be occurring or else re- reduce the opportunity for fraud each of the different entities for which they're responsible for. So they came up with a fraud risk assessment. And uh this is meant to comply with some of the requirement, well, some of the recommendations of the Committee for Sponsoring Organizations of the Treadway Commission, or COSO, that devotes themselves to um providing guidance and a framework for risk management and internal control and fraud deterrence. It also is um they took elements from the Government Accountant Office or the GAO. And uh with that input, they came up with the fraud risk assessment. And there are basically five things that they try and encourage. One of those is what is the tone at the top? Does management, does uh the controlling boards have a um a commitment to ethics, a commitment to honesty? And uh do they tolerate uh things that would probably give people the opportunity for fraud or using abuse or um abusive city assets? They also ask about uh risk assessment, which is what we do every year. And I think this is for us, it kind of comes naturally. We receive an receive an awful lot of training on this. Uh for some smaller entities, sometimes they don't, may not have the expertise to go through the things to identify fraud, identify fraud or else um take action when it's when it's occurred. Also with the organization that's our size, we have the ability to have better separation of duties. Uh where, for example, the treasurer is not the person that's writing the checks or the accountant who's reconciling the checking account is not the person who's uh who's making payments or authorizing those type of things. So those are very important things. Uh they also encourage control activities. Uh that's uh along with separation of its duties, it's, you know, how do we handle our wire transfers? Uh who's authorized to make transfers for the city or to make payments? Um how is cash handled at each of our different facilities? Uh they also encourage communication and then they ask about monitoring. So do we do we regularly go out and look at the operations of each of the uh city and uh talk to them? And I think most of the departments are familiar with that. We do that on a regular basis. So with a fraud risk assessment, um they have asked us to uh go through a questionnaire and I think we had that, didn't we, Nicole?
It's attached.
Oh, they've got, okay. Okay, you've got it. Great. Um with that, we go through each of these questions and it's kind of a self-check. Gives us the opportunity to say, hey, do we have these type of controls in place? Uh are we actively monitoring the operations of the city? Do we have weaknesses that we can strengthen? Um some of the things that have been very uh visible or should be is the annual training that each each of our city employees receives. And I know that you received that also. They also have the training for newly elected officials, which I know that each one of you have taken. Thank you very much. That allows us to to check that box. Um we also have a fraud hotline that uh each of our employees are made aware of the best that we can. It's on our on our internet website that if they are aware of something that's questionable, it can be reported on anonymously or directly to either myself or the legal department. Uh Eric and I get those and when they come in, we review those and we determine the appropriate action on how to handle those. Uh so with those things, uh we feel like we've done a good job getting through uh setting up the proper controls for detecting and uh and reducing the opportunity for fraud. Uh one of the things the state auditor stated, which is kind of a common statement amongst auditors is that the cost of the lock, the lock should never exceed what you're trying to protect. So we do our very best. Uh but uh you know, you can always throw more money at it. Um if we see a weakness, we want to address it. But we feel like we do a pretty good job trying to detect things and when we find uh weaknesses, we do address those. And that's kind of an ongoing process. So far, we've been fairly successful with things like that. So that's what we have before you. Uh the fraud risk assessment is required to be turned into the state auditor once a year. It's certified by myself and certified by Mr. Peely, uh the city manager. And uh that's that's what I had for you. Be happy to answer any questions you might have at all.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Sure.
Um is this part of a larger report? The first page says continue.
Oh, I appreciate that. Yeah, the first, it's kind of interesting. You look at the first page and there's nine items. Well, if that's not the entire thing, the second page is a uh an expansion of the separation of duties. And they call it a basic separation of duties questionnaire. And I think you have a copy of that also. So that's a supplement to the first page and that that represents the entirety of this report.
So the second page, is that maybe the first? Or?
Um the second page is entitled Basic Separation of Duties. So I I don't know what order you've got them on your.
Yeah, that's the second page.
Okay. Yep.
Um and then I was curious on the points. Is there a, I see the total points earned, risk level. But is there a, for each question, is there a range? So some have five, some have twenties.
Yeah, they haven't provided us with that other than what you see on the form. So if you um for example, there's twelve questions on the basic separation of duties, but there's two hundred points available in question number one, which relates to that question. They haven't given us any breakdown of that. It's completely subjective and it gives us the ability to I guess determine, you know, how much we think we're complying with it. Uh or else just say that we're doing it and we get all the points or else we are not doing it and we get zero. So there isn't guidance on that.
So you mark yes. The points can.
Correct. You get the points.
So what was our total points?
So the total points, we.
One ninety five, I mean, three ninety five out of three ninety five?
That's correct. We didn't have any weaknesses like we needed to dock ourselves in points. And I've done that in the past when we've had a few things. But this year, I feel like we've pretty well covered each of these points. The state auditor doesn't ever come back that I'm aware of and say, oh, you should have graded yourself a little more harshly or maybe you weren't liberal enough with your with your grading. Um this is meant to be an internal tool that we can use to educate uh not only the control personnel or finances, but also the city. That's how we use it.
Jim, uh my question is, uh maybe, I don't know, even this, not looking. Completive for fiscal year ending is June thirty twenty twenty four, completion day is May sixth twenty twenty four.
Okay, I'm sorry, the the question?
It's done a month and a half before.
Uh which number are we looking at?
No, it's the fiscal year ended in June uh thirty twenty twenty four and then the completion date is May sixth twenty twenty four. Is a.
Yeah, we end ours in June thirtieth.
Our year end is June.
That is the end of our fiscal year. So we are, yeah, we have a fiscal year that ends June thirty thirtieth and starts on July first. That's why we're having our meeting now so that you have this presented before the end of the fiscal year, which would be next week. That helps? I don't think it does.
And then the form was filled out.
Oh.
The sixth.
Yeah, we we did this.
Our audit meeting, I can't remember.
It was, it was, I think, the week or two after that. So it was just, this was filled out uh prior to the presentation of the Audit Committee.
And does our outside auditor ever double check any of these to make sure we are complying?
The the outside auditor regularly uh goes over all of these items. Uh that's that's part of what the state auditor asks them to do. They want to know if we've got the hotline. They want to know if we have separation of duties. And I think even some of you randomly are asked some of these questions when there's an audit, just to make sure that we're that everybody's on the same page.
Okay. Sorry, Tom, did your question get answered? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question too about the government body, about the written policies. And then there's A through I. Are those policies available on website or are they just internal policy or how are those?
Um many of those are personnel policies and I know that you requested some changes on the publication of our personnel policies. I don't recall exactly where uh I know that we have them internally in our internal policy uh training that everybody goes through. Uh I'm not sure if they're on the website or not.
The personnel manual is on the website, so.
Okay, so no other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have our council calendar. Does anybody have any questions on our schedule? Okay, saying none. Potential future agenda items. Anybody have anything to bring up?
I didn't have one, Mayor.
Okay.
Uh I want to revisit the TC uh to that one, that's twenty twenty fours. Again, but uh basically I was not here at the regular meetings, so.
And what was that one referring to?
This store is about uh seventy two hundred.
That's correct, yeah. It was the property next to the animal shelter that was
The storage units?
Nine weeks ago.
You weren't at the regular meeting?
No, I wasn't. I was on Zoom.
Oh, but you voted?
Yeah.
You voted.
Yeah, but I, no, it's a kind of inconvenient for me because I, if I was here, I have a couple of questions for the city. I just wonder because we have adjacent of uh city, we have a property ready adjacent to this one, correct?
Uh huh.
Yeah. I was thinking about maybe the city gonna purchase this property. Is that we planning to do that? Or? No. Okay, and then I think I, oh, I didn't know that stores need to be there.
Okay, but didn't pass the vote. So I guess the question is, is there four that would like it back on the agenda to revisit? Don's not here today, so to get.
Revisit meaning to reconsider or to.
Yeah, reconsider the same. So.
Right, there were two things, right? I mean.
Two things that.
There was, there was one question regarding the, I don't, I don't remember for sure. I'm just trying to remember.
Yeah, four, four voted against this. And then we did still pass the rezone of the animal shelter next door.
Those are the two things.
Yeah, so we did still continue on that because we were doing outside storage. And so that still was a benefit for the city and everybody agreed on that part. Just that uh the no vote was whether or not the storage units were appropriate for that other location.
So you, so you're. What are you asking?
Uh I'm asking for, I I believe it's that store is right there as a good for a neighborhood store. Uh because I I was thinking about maybe the city gonna purchase that property for the adaptation to our. Now found out it's a, basically the city not gonna plan to do this, so I think it's gonna be a change.
Oh, so you voted, because you did vote against.
Against, yeah.
The zone change.
Yeah. So that's what I.
Three people voted in favor and one against. So with Don not here, I don't think you would have an accurate
Yeah, maybe to wait.
Opportunity. So maybe let's talk and see if there's a fill for it. Everybody all right with that? Waiting for everybody to be present?
Wait, I'm just trying to clarify. Did you just want to talk about why that decision was made or to make a couple additional? Because I don't think we can reverse.
Well, we'd have to
Bring it back.
Bring it all the way back through the process. So otherwise, we have to wait one year, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because he voted against it. Now, I think, if I'm understanding, you want to vote for it.
Right, right.
And so he wants the opportunity to bring it back before the one year. If they make a drastic change on what they want to put on the property, they can bring it back anytime. But for the same item, it has to be a full year. So it's just whether or not the council wants to hear it again. I don't know, you know, what information would be needed for other people to change their votes.
Well, if we had three against and he's changing or four against, yeah, and he wants to change his vote, then it just flip flops the result.
Right.
So. I don't, I mean, maybe, maybe, maybe.
Maybe somebody else changes their mind another way, but.
But so the, what would the process be?
Yeah, Nicole.
Yes, so it would need to be renoticed. It would not have to go back through the planning commission since they already reviewed it and and gave the council their recommendation. So we would just renotice it. It would be on the study meeting and then on the regular meeting for voting once more.
And it's only appropriate or legal if the council chooses to bring it for 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 members of the council. If not, then then they can't bring it for.
Yeah, the applicant not recommit or recement for a full year.
Thank you.
If we're gonna reconsider the exact same application, I'm not interested. Yeah, we want to wait for Dawn and get a full vote. That's fine.
Okay. Unless there's four tonight that say no, but.
Would we?
Okay, we will wait for Mr. Christiansen to be in attendance and we'll move forward. Hey, any other potential future agenda items? Scott is pausing.
Yeah, I've got a couple. Um we had a little correspondence last week about street racing and I really liked Councilman TC Manu's comment back that he's in favor. Correct me if I misquote you, in favor of making West Valley the most unfriendly place for street racing. I love it. And uh so I don't know if we can talk about fines, if there are fines related to street racing. And then that just got me thinking again, which feels like I talk and think too much about boarding houses. What are our fines if if we find out someone is running a boarding house? Let's make our city the least friendly place for boarding houses.
So would you like reports from the appropriate divisions next week?
Yeah, that would be great.
And then. Pardon?
Whenever it's convenient, in the next, whenever you can fit them in. Seems like we have short meetings, so we can always fit them in.
Yeah, we do want to just have reports right now.
We do have those prepared. Um Steve Pastrick's not here tonight and he he did prepare um a big lengthy email that just kind of answered all of the questions that uh the council had raised. And then Eric actually drafted something for street racing that we'll be sending out as well that just gets into what they are. It's a class A misdemeanor and um and how, what leverage we have as far as that goes. So I'll send those out and get it added to the agenda.
Perfect.
Okay.
And and with boarding houses, like Steve was, like Nicole mentioned, he was prepared to to bring. Uh we just talked about whether or not um we had just have a general presentation or we just go out, look at all the questions that have come through and he's gone through and answered all of them. And so I I just suggested to him, just send the email and then we'll wait to see what the council wants. If there's anything you want, but if we want it to go straight to presentation, he's he's prepared to go over that as well. Um and then that would be the same for, like you mentioned, Nicole.
Yeah, I think if you want to send the emails and then let's just have a item, agenda item we can talk about.
Okay, remind communication for next week.
Well, if we get the email, then that that's good enough and we can just have a, have some time here to talk about it and see if there's anything we can do to move forward.
Yeah, my question is if she has put on communication for us to talk about it.
I could just do it as the council follow up that we've sort of done and hash the email to to it. So you guys have it in front of you if that's, okay.
And is there a specific response to that? I don't remember the name of the street that we've been hearing lately. The email from Steve said I'll.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does address specifically.
Okay. And then um I was, I, sorry, I did not watch last week's uh meetings, I'll be honest. But um Mr. Bone came again. I don't know if the council wants to look at the scoring or exceptions or a presentation from Public Works as to whether or not we can make changes to help neighborhood streets like this easier. Is there an appetite from the council?
Yeah, I think I brought it up last week and I believe there was an appetite to at least
Okay.
Discuss.
We have that prepared too.
Okay. See, please, thank you. Hey, anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to our council reports. Do you guys have anything to share? Yes.
Uh, attended cops and cleats on Thursday. Soccer clinic. Looked like to me it was really well attended. Chief Jacobs didn't let me help out, so I didn't just stand around with my hands in my pockets and I go help people check in and, um, great to see the turnout. And the coaches, they have a new set of coaches come in and they look awesome. They did.
Awesome. Okay, seen no others? Did we have a need for a closed session tonight? Nobody? Okay. And we just have one more motion. Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we stand adjourned.